Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, April the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the last meeting dated Monday, March 25th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $63,606.86. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated first day of April 2019 in the amount of $63,606.86.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, and we have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. As soon as we're done with our paperwork, we'll reset and start the Board of Works meeting. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, April the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March 25th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make said motion.
I second.
I also vote aye. Or, motion. Did we just do the?
Minutes.
Minutes. Motion to approve? Second?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have forty pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,499,843.55. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I just got one. I've probably asked this a hundred times. This month, or this meeting, we're paying almost a million and a half. And last meeting, why is it the sewer? Or this one? I know it's always a lot lower.
Right.
But usually, this is a lot higher, or this is a lot higher?
This has three payrolls in it because of three payrolls in the month of March. That probably didn't have any.
Okay.
And normally, that's what it is. I try to get it done, like on this one, the last day of March, so we have everything for that month.
Yeah.
And the last day of March was actually a pay period, so that was our third pay.
I just noticed. Not a big deal. That's all I ask. I have nothing else.
Any Board have any other questions?
I have none.
None. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated April 1st, 2019 in the amount
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have several items. First item is permission to have the Little League Parade. And I'll ask clerk to read it into the record.
Dear Board, Beach Grove Little League, along with the Beach Grove Girls' Softball Alliance, would like to host our annual parade this year on Saturday, April 27th, 2019. The parade routes will be from Saratoga-Bolton right to Ninth to the Little League Diamonds, and the girls' softball will be left on to 13th Street. We are asking for police and fire department assistance this day. The parade will kick off at 9:00 AM. Beach Grove Little League will provide a certificate of insurance to the city. Thank you, Curtis Keane.
Questions from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Little League request to hold a parade on Saturday, April 27th.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next up is permission to have Beautify Beach Grove Walk. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the request into the record.
Dear Board, the 7th Annual Beach Grove's Family Walk is scheduled this year for September 28th, 2019, starting at 8:00 AM. The meeting point to start the walk will be in the Saratoga-Bolton Park, and we have notified the park of our intent to utilize the park as a starting point. We are asking permission to utilize city streets during this walk. As always, we will get the police and fire department for approval of our walk route. We will provide a certificate of insurance to the city prior to the walk. If you have any questions, please let me know. Julie Lockwood.
Thank you. Either Chief have a concern with it? You seen the map?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Is this the same route as previous? That's all?
No questions or comments. Ask for a motion to approve the request from Beautify Beach Grove to hold a family walk.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is promotion within Public Works.
Good evening, Board. It is my recommendation to the Board of Works that Jamie Lockwood be promoted to the position of Street Superintendent at the Department of Public Works. This position has been vacated due to the retirement of John Biggs on March 29th, 2019. Mr. Lockwood has been employed with the Department of Public Works for the past thirty-three years and has a great deal of experience and knowledge. If approved, Mr. Lockwood, if approved for this position, salary will increase $248.21 per pay. There is money in the MVH budget to fund this.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
I've got a question. Brad, I'm not so sure that MVH will, if there's funds in there because of the fact, the way they changed the law, that fifty percent of anything that goes into MVH has to go for projects now. I congratulate Jamie. I think he'll do a wonderful job, but my concern is the fact that John Biggs will still collect the paycheck for weeks to come, and so you're...
How I reconciled that was, so they were both, they're both currently being paid out of MVH.
Okay.
So I will not replace Jamie for probably three months.
And that was my question to you. Okay, I have no issue with...
Basically, I'm sliding Jamie into John's position, but I will not fill Jamie's position until the budget catches up.
Right. And we may have to at a later date get together, and any of these salaries that are in MVH move them somewhere else because of the new law.
Any other questions from the Board? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Director's recommendation to promote Jamie Lockwood to Street Superintendent.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is a hotel motel license and permit application. Chief, did you want to talk on it? Bring the Board up to date.
This license is not for a new building, but Days Inn has taken over where Motel Six was. And we had a meeting with the new manager and owner, and she seems very cooperative. She's got in place some cameras that we requested, and she, as far as the police, and she's made it known that whatever the police need, she's willing to do it if it's there. She seems like a very reliable owner and manager. It seems like a win for Beach Grove with this property.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
Didn't that used to be a Days Inn years ago?
Years ago, it was a Days Inn.
I, uh...
It's Motel Six now.
It was a Motel Six, now it's back to a Days Inn.
Okay.
Motel Six paid the license fee for 2019, so what I wanted to do was go ahead and bring this in front of the Board and let the Board approve this application, but not charge them the fee, since it's already been paid for 2019. Any concerns on that?
Are they even running now?
Yes, they are, as the Days Inn. They just haven't gotten their signs put up.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the hotel motel license and permit application for Days Inn.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Surplus old SCBA. Fire Department Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'm going to go ahead and pass these out. Made one for everybody. Let me explain my letters a bit. Dear Board, I'm asking for approval for the surplus of our complete 2006 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus and equipment. The inventory sheet is attached, and that will be the following six pages. Our 2006 Scott SCBA and equipment has been serviced for over thirteen years and has outlived its operational lifespan. It currently has no value for safe operational use. If approved, the equipment will be donated as is to Wayne Township ESEC Emergency Service Education Center. This donation will allow the Beach Grove Fire Department to utilize the Training Center grounds for WPEs, Work Performance Evaluations, high-rise tower training, flashover chamber, and other mandatory hands-on fire department training, free charge for a five-year period. Now, in the letter, I do state five-year period. The lady I spoke to, Jennifer, she was a little overzealous when I told her what we had going on. She since then took the proposal to her Board, and the Board came back with a written contract for a two-year agreement. Within the two-year agreement, it would still allow the Fire Department to conduct our WPEs for two years. We currently spend $1,000 for those two, three-day periods a year. Plus, it'll allow us twelve training days at the tower, the burn facility, the flashover chamber. We can do hazmat operations. Each day, they would charge us over $1,000 per day. So, total overall package, it's over $24,000 in training days, plus the $2,000 for the WPEs for two years. So it's still very beneficial to the Fire Department. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
The thing tonight would be to get the old SCBA surplus. Is that right?
Correct. And you can defer, give to Craig Legal, take a look at the contract, see if he wants to make any amendments to it. The date on the contract wouldn't go into effect till August of this year, so we have plenty of time to take a look and make any changes if needed. I'll get my comments to you in the morning. Okay. The most important thing is to surplus our SCBA this evening.
My question, on the last time we did something like this, I thought they gave us some release that if anything happened, the City of Beach Grove would not be liable.
I'll look in there, see if that's in there.
Okay.
For the use of the equipment we're donating?
Right, yes. So it released us...
Is that something they talked about, Rob?
Yes, it's included in the package.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If the Board doesn't have any comments or questions, I'll ask for a motion to surplus, or the Chief's recommendation to surplus the 2006 Scott SCBA and equipment.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. And then at the next meeting, Rob will take up the agreement with ESEC.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next order of business is Phase One Storm Water Recommendation from Westler. At the last meeting, we opened one bid from Smith Projects in the amount of $182,198. The engineer's estimate for this project was $139,378. The quote received is approximately thirty-one percent higher than the engineer's estimate. So pursuant to Indiana Code, public works projects costing $150,000 or more are not eligible to be awarded through the quote process and shall be publicly bid. Therefore, the quote received should be rejected by the Board. So it's going to be Westler's recommendation to this Board to reject that bid and to restart the process as early as tomorrow. What they want to do is they want to split the two projects. One project would be Ninth Avenue and Woodmont Court, and the second project would be McFarland Creek. So I'll open it up for questions and comments, but I think this is a very sound recommendation.
What's the benefit to dividing it up into two different projects?
Lower bids.
Lower bids.
Hopefully to get lower bids. The big problem is the McFarland Creek, the bank stabilization, that is expensive. All of the materials is expensive, and that's what threw the project over the estimate, was the, what they call coconut sheet that stabilizes the bank itself. So their recommendation to us is to reject that quote at Smith Projects. So I'll ask for a motion to reject the quote from Smith Projects and to re-quote the project in two phases.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Last order of business is LPA agreement between the City of Beach Grove and NDOT or the Community Crossings Grant. The City of Beach Grove was awarded $333,500 in grant money for road reconstruction, and in order to begin this process, we have to enter into an agreement with NDOT. Local Roads and Bridges Matching Grant Agreement is made and entered into effective as of the date of the Indiana Attorney General's signature affixed to this agreement by and between the Indiana Department of Transportation and the City of Beach Grove, a local unit, and collectively referred to as the Parties, is executed pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth herein. Consideration of those mutual undertakings and covenants, Parties agree as follows. And I defer to Craig for any comment.
Yeah, it's their standard boilerplate agreement, so if you have anything to add, really.
The only thing I want to bring to your attention is, I don't even know where it's at. I'm going to guess it's in, all the way to the back, the second to the last page. These are the Road Rehabilitation 3R/4R Standards. This comes from the Paser inventory list that was done in road grading, and one road that gets reconstructed is 24th Avenue from Churchman to Southern. That road is completely taken out. Second Avenue from Albany to Bethel, that road as well is completely taken out. Byland Drive from 12th to Ninth, that road too is completely taken out. Seventh Avenue from Alton to Bell Fountain, that road too is completely taken out. Sixteenth Avenue from Albany to Main is another road that's completely taken out. All these roads are completely taken out, starting over. And Fifteenth Avenue from Main to the top of Saratoga-Bolton Park, that road is taken out as well. So those, that is the spring project, and hopefully it will go well enough, and we'll get a good enough bid that we can do a little bit more work in the fall. But that is the list for this spring, so I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments.
And these are the worst streets that we have.
These are all graded between one and three. Twenty-fourth Avenue is the only road in Beach Grove that was graded one, which is the worst road. So, very happy about that. All of them are twos and threes, so...
Okay, thank you.
So any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Beach Grove and NDOT, or LPA agreement between the City of Beach Grove and NDOT.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. I have to do blue ink, Dan. I think that's what it is. Yeah. That completes new business. Comments from Board members?
Thank you.
I have none.
None. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Works meeting.
Make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:22 PM. Our City Council will convene at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. Evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Monday, April the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each person to identify themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District Five. Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascari, Council District Two.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council District One.
Chris Duffer, Council District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
And Councilor Jim Brooks has an excused absence this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have three special presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation for Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas legislation was passed in 2008 to declare March 29th as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, the City of Beach Grove will honor all military members deployed to support one of the longest conflicts in which our country has ever been involved. And whereas we recognize the veterans of our armed forces who served our country in Vietnam as well as the sacrifices they made, and whereas our nation has learned much since its birth, no lesson as fundamental as the one learned after the Vietnam War, to support and respect our veterans and armed forces members, and whereas we shift our thoughts and prayers to the memories of the, to the families of over 58,000 who never made it home, and whereas there is a profound sense of humanity in war that can be ignored in the safety of our day-to-day life. May we use this day to recall what was given by the men and women who fought in Vietnam and acknowledge who their sacrifices have impacted and will continue to impact lives across America. And whereas we see Vietnam veterans in our daily lives as parents, grandparents, in rural communities, and in the hearts of cities, today let us seek them out to express our deepest gratitude for what they surrendered for our freedom and that of South Vietnam. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2019, as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Beach Grove and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. The second special presentation this evening is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. Whereas the American Legion was founded in Paris, France, by United States veterans on March 15th, 1919. Whereas the American Legion is the nation's largest and most powerful organization of U.S. wartime veterans and their families. Whereas since its inception by Congress in 1919, the American Legion has delivered substantial improvements for veterans, their families, and their communities. Whereas in the fall of 2018, the National Commander of the American Legion visited Post 276 in Beach Grove as part of his statewide tour. Whereas each May, American Legion Post 276 Beach Grove conducts a Memorial Day service at the Saratoga-Bolton Park. And whereas, American Legion Post 276 continues to assist the City of Beach Grove by replacing the 10-by-15 American flags as they become tattered. Whereas new generations of veterans depend on the kind of vision shared and expressed by World War I-era founders. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby recognize the American Legion for all they do nationally and in our city. The third and final special presentation this evening from the Governor's Office is a announcement of a Community Crossings Matching Grant Award to the City of Beach Grove in the amount of $335,500 to pave local roads and streets. With this award, over the last three years, the City of Beach Grove has received $1.15 million in NDOT funding to repair local roads. So we want to recognize NDOT and the Governor's Office for this award, and our DPW Director, Brad Meriwether, for his work in obtaining this award. On to minutes. Council, you have been given a printed copy of the minutes dated March 4th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Next up is public comments. Counselor?
Sure. Mr. Grenoble. If it is possible, without any objections, Mr. Grenoble would like just a minute of extra time, four minutes. Okay. Yeah, we got quite a few people signed up tonight.
I think I can do it in three minutes and 40 seconds, but I didn't want you to look at the clock and see three minutes and go. I just thought I'd ask. Good evening, Council. I'm Dave Grenoble, and I live at 115 South 12th Avenue in Beach Grove, Indiana, 46107. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen, hoping to appeal to your core values and common sense. I don't think any of us can argue that the sewer pipes have been ignored for decades and that the lack of maintenance has taken its toll. Even with the over $700,000 of repair and maintenance done by this administration, the pictures posted a couple of weeks ago by Phil Gerganis on Facebook shows just how far behind we are. Here's what we know. Repairs are needed. Funds exist to help aid with the cost. Today is April 1st, which means there are 275 days remaining in 2019. Please remember this number. Now, we all know that information is good. It's what helps us make decisions, and I don't think any of us can debate the fact that Mr. Bertrand has vast knowledge on the selling of a utility. He is a Deputy Mayor, Chief of Staff of Westfield, and was there during the process they went through to sell their utilities. He has been forthcoming with information and has taken the time to answer all questions asked. With that said, Mr. Bertrand shared with Gary Hall and I after the March meeting that at the end of the day, and everything is decided, that the final decision to approve a sale falls on the Regulatory Commission, and that process can take a minimum of 200 days. With all this in mind, I would urge you to stop all of this spending of fun... With all this in mind, I would urge you to stop all of this spending of funds. I hope the clerk has the numbers Mr. Mascari has asked for. Stop the discussion of the sale of our utility. We are in an election year, and your decision could burden a new administration. We know at the very least, we will get two new council members and a new Clerk Treasurer. We need to start looking ahead on repairs and updates. Now, if none of this appeals to you, I would urge you to stop all of this because we are reacting based off fear. Fear of rate increases, which didn't happen in 2017 or 2018, fear of a disastrous issue, which has never happened with our sewers, and I think you have done all you can. If Mr. Bertrand, with all his experience and knowledge, doesn't have a list of interested buyers, and understands their level of interest after 90 days, and if no one has started a plan to start moving the $1.3 to $1.4 million we used from the sewer fund to run the city, and considering we still have work to do, and you are down to the last 275 days of 2019, I ask you to use common sense to move forward with the repairs needed, and to seek the aid provided from funding from grants. Although Beach Grove is far more than sewers, Beach Grove as we know it, the Beach Grove we are all proud of, the Beach Grove we love to tell people we live in will stop, because without funding, we won't have our Beach Grove Fire or Police, our street department that we all brag about, especially after every snow, our own senior or community center. I leave you with this. If the money I believe that has been spent on the funding to gather information to sell has been spent, you would have had the match for the OAKR grant application. And like all grants, I understand nothing is guaranteed. But talk with the people who elected you, because I have, and the overwhelming majority don't agree with the sale of the sewers. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
I still live at 321 North 18th. I haven't moved next door yet. Anyway, those that attend meeting knows where that's coming from. I come in regards to noise ordinance. You know, just this last Saturday, you know, I haven't gathered, I don't have notes, but I have feelings. I was woke, I was wakened at 7:30 in the morning with dogs barking, and they didn't stop till 11 o'clock. This is a daily occurrence. I hear mufflers going. I hear neighbors out there at 4:30 in the morning yelling like crazy for an hour. You know? Then I look at the noise ordinance, and I see $500 penalty. You know, I'm on a fixed income, as many of the people here are. That's absurd. And then I saw something the other day that changed my mind about this ordinance altogether. $1,500? That's really absurd. I don't agree with it. I agree we have to have a noise ordinance. But until it's worked out with all these crazy things I see in there, I see a lot of things that maybe an administration could be vindictive with. First, first time a guy can come up to you, give you a citation, $500? I sit out in my backyard, working my garden with my radio on. There's nothing about decibels, there's nothing about noise. Guy comes up and says, "I don't like you. Somebody sent me here." You get a $500 ticket. It's unacceptable to me, and I think a lot of people here. I think it's time you table this issue, start looking at some real issues that face our city. I don't see where a noise ordinance is an issue anyway, because you don't enforce it anyway. Come to my neighborhood. Come on out. You can sleep Friday night and get woke up every morning. That's how it is. You're not going to enforce it. You know, I call it, right, the Dog Pound Guy, everybody, nothing's ever done. Right, the mayor, talked to the mayor about it one time. He said, "My neighborhoods like it, too. Well, let's stop it." There's dog, I don't know, there's Puppy Pounds or something. And the other thing, table this issue. Do what the people want, not what administration wants, not what the Democrats want, the Republicans, but what the people want. I am sick and tired of coming to these meetings and seeing agendas pushed. When you talk to the people in the city, it's a different agenda. Wake up. Now it's election time. Oh, we're going to hear all knocking on the door, "Hi, I'm your best friend." Bull. Starting knocking on my door and saying, "What needs to be done?" "Oh, we need a sidewalk for our children to walk down the street safely in the dark." That's never been accomplished, never been addressed. I was told to contact the Department of Transportation. That's not my job. My job is to make my councilwoman apprised of the issue. I'm not supposed to be go to my DOT man and tell him to go evaluate my road. Let's do our jobs. That's all I got to say in this sewer thing. Who are we going to sell to? It looks like citizens the only one. Why are we paying somebody to go find somebody else that ain't going to exist? And not only that, it starts in Lawrence, goes to Warren, then we get what's left of the pipes. That's why our streets are flooded. That's why my street is always lined with hot water heaters, dryers, because our basements are flooded. And then you get somebody builds an alley behind our house like this, where all the water runs off into our yards, down into our basements. That was good pioneering there. But anyway, that's all I got to say. I get kind of hostile, because I see, you know, I was ahead of, I was in charge of over 1,000 people, and when I see bylaws change ordinances, I see agendas behind it. Stop the agendas. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Carla Richardson, 332 North 14th Avenue, Beach Grove. I came to you guys last month because of the noise ordinance, and at the time, I didn't think we had an option. The mayor had written a new one that was very vague, had very little information, had very little rules, which meant, as Mr. Busby said, it could be construed in any way. A neighbor could complain on you, and it was not written in there whether or not the police had to witness it versus a neighbor calling in. I since have been told by some police that they have to actually witness it to issue a citation. The average person isn't aware of that, so those types of things, I think, need to be written in. A group of us got together, made some revisions, submitted it to Councilor Duffer, and after all of that happened, then we started looking and realizing that the citizens still don't like the noise ordinance as written, or the proposed one. It's still too vague, has too many loopholes, and too many questions. People have been messaging me and emailing me and saying, "What about this? What about that?" I can't answer those questions because it's not written in the ordinance. It's vague. I don't know. So what's going to happen when an event happens, and/or somebody has something in their backyard, and they get hit with a citation? They have no recourse. They can't go back and prove or disprove because it's not written in here. So, my request is that you forget about this ordinance, go back to the old ordinance that's 10 pages long, that's detailed out, that has every single paragraph spelled out, and then just follow the ordinance. If you wish to change the times on there, because the times are pretty early, I think it's like 6:00 or 6:30 in the evening, noise has to stop, expand that, make it later. If you want to take out the locomotives and steam engines, take it out. If you want to change the penalty and make it a tiered penalty, where the first one is a warning and then a certain amount, but make it, make it hard enough to hurt somebody to where they're going to obey by the law, but don't kill somebody that gets hit by something that they didn't know about, and they weren't aware of when they made the noise or when they went against the law. If they knowingly do it, then they deserve a fine, but not $1,500. So my, my request is that you table the new proposed one, go back to the old one, take some time, look over it, make your amendments, and then propose it again. Thank you.
Dan?
Oh, Dan.
Yep.
Oh, I thought he said Dan. Okay.
Dan McMillan, 81 South 13th Street, Beach Grove. My comment is, I'm opposed to the noise ordinance as presented. It's too vague. I commend the citizens that went through and redid this. I think it's great to have their input and everything else, but I want to go a step further, completely trash this whole thing and start over. It's crazy the way it's written. You know, I just don't think the accountability is there for what they're asking for, as far as, you know, it leaves it up to a certain person as to whether you're wrong and I'm right, or vice versa. So, I would like to see it just completely trashed tonight. On the sewer, it's no surprise, I'm 100% opposed to it. It will bankrupt the City of Beach Grove. I've got some numbers that I'll share with people later on when we get to that. I do have two questions for our police chief. Number one, since 2012, how many times have we issued a citation for noise ordinance? If, if you don't know the answer to that, I would ask that as a public information request, and I think it's, the people of the city need to know that. And the second one is, the parking on Main Street, the two-hour parking, how many citations have we issued for that? Again, I think it's probably zero, but I don't know that for sure, so at the same time, I would like to issue a public information request on that. And I think it's silly to make these rules if we're not going to enforce it. And I think it's time we change that. I think the good show of support by the citizens, and we work for the citizens, they don't work for us. And it's about time we do something to show that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I'm Robert Ferguson, live at 84 South 10th Avenue. Last month, I came up here and I spoke against the city ordinance. I was then asked by Councilmember Duffer to work with Carla Richardson and myself, and also Pam Dollar. We all got together and we reviewed some other local city ordinances that I had brought up during last month's meeting. Those ordinances that we looked at were from Indianapolis, Cumberland, and Greenwood. All, every single one of those ordinances have a tier structure for the penalties that they assess for the noise ordinance violation. One thing that we tried to put in there was to make sure that officers have a discretion on issuing a noise ordinance or not. In my current profession, I have to enforce noise ordinance violations for the City of Indianapolis, and I would say 99% of the time, those are resolved by just simply telling the person to turn the music down, or stop making the noise, or end the party. That is a great tool for our police officers in Beach Grove to have, especially when we're trying to build a community relationship with the police officers in the city. When it comes to majority of the citizens, their only interaction with the City of Beach Grove is going to be law enforcement. They view law enforcement as an extension of the city, which they are. So we want to make sure that we have that positive interaction with our citizens, with our police force. So as it's written right now, and the comments I've been hearing from the citizens, I would like to have this ordinance stricken down and completely rewritten. I think it's important to have feedback from the Police Department on this noise ordinance, and also I think the council members need to also review other current city ordinances to aid them in writing the new city ordinance into place. Also, one other thing I'd like to bring up is, I work late shift, and with that being said, I drive down Emerson Avenue late at night. One thing that I've been noticing is the light on the fallen officers memorial there at Emerson and Garstang is not lighting the American flag or the fallen officers' flag in that park. I don't know if the city operates that, or whether it's Amtrak, because it's right on the corner of their property, but I do believe that that's something that we need to do. By minimum, by the city is make sure that that flag and that memorial is lit at nighttime to pay the respect to the three fallen officers of Beach Grove. Thank you.
Jim Witham, is that it?
Yes.
All right, no longer want to speak? It's not Jim Kaufman?
Yeah, I think it is.
Is it Kaufman? Terrible landline, sorry. All right, Jim.
Jim Kaufman, 332 Timber Grove Way. I come here as a part of the community outreach team for the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce. I've started about eight or 10 months ago, working on a community guide for the City of Beach Grove. It's, it just came to print. Southside Times printed it. I have copies of it for you. Has a business directory in it for the chamber, has information, if you have an issue with the pothole, who to call, who to talk to. If you have an issue about trash, who to call, who to talk to. The addresses, phone numbers of who's in charge of those areas, any question as to anything in the city, whether, you know, recycling, when's that, when do I do this, who do I call about a dog, who do I call about this or that? So, all that information is here. Worked with Mayor Buckley, Elizabeth Lindsay. She's a resident here. She had this in another city where she lived a few years ago. Came here, saw all the questions on Facebook and all the issues that people have on, about city operations and who you contact. So, we came together with the chamber, and then there's advertisers in here who helped make this possible. So, this was free to the chamber. Ended up making some money off the advertisers, but it is a free community guide. So, I do have copies here, if you guys want to pass along.
Thank you.
I will get you one. We're, the chamber will be, every time that we have, working with some realtors, so every time a house sells, we're going to get that address, and then we will hand deliver them to those addresses. So, I think they said about 250, 300 houses a year sell in Beach Grove. Somebody might be able to correct me.
Hey, Jim, we have a lot of extras. If you just want to set up here.
Yeah, I can get some more. I think there were 2,000 printed, so I can get you some more. There's some extras there. And if anybody wants to...
How about a PDF album?
We're working on that. Yes, we are working on that, so we can be uploaded to this website. So, we're working on that, absolutely. So, I believe there's some down in the clerk's office, right, Dan? I saw some the other day. Were there some?
Not to my knowledge. They could have them in front, and I just don't know about it.
Okay. I'm sure, are we okay to put some in there?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we'll put some in the clerk's office. The mayor can get some, and then the businesses on Main Street should have them as well. So, stay tuned. They just, they just came out about two weeks ago, so we're trying to get them out, and get them out. There's a calendar in there about community events and that stuff, so...
Jim, that's pretty nice. A lot of us go back, we live by the old Beach Grove phone directory.
Correct. Lions Club, absolutely.
I guess this is a runner-up right here.
Correct, correct. So there's no residential information in that, because most people don't have a landline, but it is, it is businesses and stuff like that. So, it's a good thing. We're excited about it. A lot of that information is there on the web somewhere. It kind of puts it in one place, so you can actually hold on to it. So, if anybody wants any copies, feel free to reach out to me, the Chamber of Commerce. Anybody will be happy to get you a copy. So, it's a good thing, and like I said, there's a few more up there. If you guys want to grab one, if not, I can get some more and bring them to you, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Pam?
My name's Pam Stalard. I live at 711 Churchman in Beach Grove. Grenoble came up with a lot of extraordinary information and points. Buzz has already gotten excited and upset, so I don't have to do that. So, I want to talk a little bit about the noise ordinance, and a little bit about the sewer system. The noise ordinance was rewritten a little bit by the three of us, and there were still some questionable areas after we got done with it. It continued to need more work. More work was done by the administration, resulting with fees that are just outrageously out of line, charging a citizen $1,500 for a noise violation is just ridiculous. It was confusing, confusing about, well, an additional fine for each additional day, for each additional occurrence. Well, is that the $100 fine, the $500 fine, or the $1,500 fine? Something that nobody has mentioned so far, I believe our police officers should be a... Something that nobody has mentioned so far, I believe our police officers should be equipped with some equipment to rate the noise level that they are observing, so that they have something they can show in court, should they have to testify in court. I don't know how to pronounce it. Is it a decimeter? Is that how you pronounce decimeter, decimeter?
Decibel.
Well, it, it records the decibels, which I think each officer should have one of those on Amazon, and those run anywhere from twenty dollars to four hundred dollars apiece. Knowing our police officers, they'll probably need the four hundred dollar variety. Okay, I'm going to move on. So on the noise ordinance, I think the doggone thing needs to be tabled and rewritten where it's a little more acceptable for the citizens and not really trying to hurt them so badly. Onto the sewer system. I'm very much against the sale of the sewer system. I'm very much against us pouring massive quantities of dollars into consulting fees when the ownership of the sewer system at this stage is a little questionable. Our mayor explained in the last meeting that he was chief executive of our sewer works, and he could do what he wanted. I'm not sure he's owner of our sewer works. I was under the impression that the people were the owner of the sewer works, and with that in mind, I feel like the people should make the decision about whether we sell our sewer or not. I feel like that entire sales question should be postponed into the election, so we don't put an extra burden on who the next mayor is going to be. And I think it should be a referendum at that particular point in time. And I don't think I've missed anything, but that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Ms. Stalard, I got a question for you.
Excuse me?
I have a question for you.
Okay, go for it.
So about three weeks ago, I got a, somebody sent me a screenshot of the post you made on social media, and I try to avoid these things, they drive me nuts, and usually I would just treat it as a long line of disgraceful and family-betraying things that are said on social media, but the inference of this post is, is that the mayor of Beech Grove is going to get a retirement benefit package, those are your terms, retirement benefit package, as a result of the sale of the utility.
That was my question, yes.
What facts do you have to suggest that?
That was a question.
Okay.
That wasn't a statement. If you carefully read that, you'll see where I am asking that question.
And then somebody asked you, they specifically asked you, what evidence do you have that suggests of it?
Order.
I'm the parlayman, sir. You'll get a chance to talk in just a second. I'm the parlayman, if you want to talk here in a second, you can. Somebody tries, somebody tries to follow up, say, hey, what do you have? You say, you can't discuss it in this, on this page. So you must have something, ma'am. You made a statement out there. It's, it's a serious allegation.
You make a statement. I asked a question. Pay attention.
You want to come up here and, you want to come and read the post?
Craig, I don't, I don't know why this can't be done between her, I said the same thing about her employees, why this, the city could address her privately.
If you're trying to embarrass or humiliate me in front of this crowd, it's not working. You're going to have to try something else.
I'll make your post part of the record. How about that?
You can do whatever you damn well please, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Templeton, you have a problem with disruption now?
Yeah. You're a tight ship at Templeton. Anybody else would like to speak that's not, who hasn't signed up yet? Anybody else?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
My name is Luanne Clark. I live at two-sixteen South Sixth Avenue. I've been there for about two and a half, three years. I have been following more closely what's happening on the council. I'm much more interested in what's happening in our city, actually kind of like own-house. And I'm disappointed, because I've never had anybody ask me what I want done in the city. And when I do ask for things that I want in the city, I'm told that it can be done, like properly sharing information on social media, like making information available through emails. So, you know, the noise ordinance was cool. It really stings, guys. Caramel, caramel has a really cool three-pager. Their fines are too much, but anyway. And selling our sewer is selling our souls. How, how many pieces do we have to break off of Beech Grove before it's no longer Beech Grove? Because that's what's going to happen. So, sorry, that's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor Wiley, in the back.
Please, come.
Okay. Sir, we know it's you, because we see your picture over here.
Good evening, folks. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Warner Wiley. I've, I live at four-oh-two Park Meadow Court in Beech Grove. I've lived in Beech Grove for my whole life, which in June will be eighty-two years. I've served the city of Beech Grove for forty-seven years, in every elected or appointed position that the city has except one. So I think I know a little bit about the city of Beech Grove, and what's taken place in the city of Beech Grove over the past forty-seven years, at least. Dave, I want to take issue with you on one thing, when you said that the sewer system had been ignored. I only speak for myself and tell you that twelve years that I was mayor of the city of Beech Grove, we spent as much money as we had available working on those sewers. You've got to keep in mind, the sewers in the city range in age from anywhere from fifty to seventy-five years, and they're obviously in poor condition. Mayor Buckley, I know in the seven years that he's been mayor, has probably done more to improve the sewer system than Elton Geisweiler or I maybe put together has done. And I think that needs to be, needs to be known here tonight. I hope you'll forgive my voice, I'm dealing with a little bit of a throaty issue. Also got a cough drop in my mouth, so if it comes flying out, be forewarned. You know, I've lived in Beech Grove, as I say, my entire life. I love Beech Grove. Kind of reminds me of the old TV show, The Andy Griffith Show, Mayberry, most of you remember that. But it kind of saddens me a little bit to see some of that fading away, a little bit at a time. Most of the things that take place in Beech Grove are good things, but every once in a while, something pop-ups, pops up, it's not so good, but we work on it. It upsets me to know that people, in some cases unfairly criticize our administration, the mayor, police department, fire department, schools, whatever else, and a lot of times without any facts to back it up. And I would encourage you, I believe in the First Amendment right to express your opinions in meetings like this, or anyplace else. I would never want anything to happen to that. But again, I would encourage you to have facts and information when you make those kind of comments or remarks. One of the apparent big issues, and you can tell this is a city election, by the way, one of the apparent big issues now concerns the possible sale of the sanitary sewer system, which, as I mentioned a while ago, is anywhere from fifty to seventy-five years old, and has plagued, has plagued the homeowners and the city for years to come. Basements is flooded, including mine, when I was mayor. My basement flooded, like a lot of your folks' basement's probably flooded, with dirty, probably unsafe water coming down in those basements. Most of you are probably too young to remember when our entire sanitary sewer system was located down in our Beech Grove City Park. Did you know that? How many of you knew that? A few of you, okay. You must have been around Beech Grove for a while. And some of that water, at one time, actually got into the city's drinking water, if you can believe that, and caused a lot of people to get sick, city to be sued for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now I think the city may have the opportunity to rid itself of that problem by possibly selling the sewer system to an entity that has the ability financially to do what's probably needed to be done with our sanitary sewer systems. And that's by replacing the broken pipes and lines that occur around through the city of Beech Grove. To the point where it's, it's gotten to the point actually where it's almost impossible or unfeasible or financially possible for the city of Beech Grove to do what needs to be done. And let me also say this to you. I've fought my life over things concerning the city of Beech Grove dating back to the nineteen-sixties, when, again, some of you might not remember, the state legislature passed a law called Uniguf, which would have taken Beech Grove, Lawrence Speedway, and Southport, and we wouldn't probably be sitting here tonight talking about the things we're talking about and having people listen to you. At least these folks up here listen to you, and I applaud them for doing that. The reason I came here tonight is to take issue with an article that was, is my, is the city attorney, by the way, he is my son, I want to take that in one. Take issue with an article that apparently was in Facebook. I don't read Facebook. I'm sure there's a lot of good things that are in Facebook, a lot of good things that are not in Facebook. And one of the things I was told was in Facebook at some period recently, was that if the sewer system was, pardon me, my mouth's getting dry, if the sewer system is sold, our good mayor will take the profits and stick it in his pocket. That is the most ridiculous thing I have ever heard. I'm trying to cut this down a little bit.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Wiley, come on.
Anyone, I'm sorry. Anyone believing that, believing that hasn't lived in Beech Grove very long, and is not aware of the many good things that this administration has done for the people of the city of Beech Grove. I've known Dennis Buckley for probably forty years or more. I knew his family more years than that, and they're all good, honest, hard-working people. Dennis's father ran for mayor of the city of Beech Grove, was a Republican back in, I think, the sixties, and he was a good friend of mine, even though we were from different parties. And that's the way it should be today. Have your issues with the city, fine, but let's don't start cutting each other up and taking Beech Grove that was, is, was, and still is, a great city to live in. It's just not part of our DNA to do that, I don't think. Dennis Buckley, in my opinion, is one of the, is one, is an honorable person, one of the most honorable people I've ever known, and a dedicated public servant. And I think it's sad that we've got some people in our city, they, and probably will continue through the city election, that are taking these issues on to try to get a name for themselves. And if that's the way to win an election, I don't want to win an election. I ran for office in the city of Beech Grove ten times, and I can tell you that I never once ever said anything negative about my opponent. I took issue with him, but never had an argument with him, or said anything that was not truthful about any of those people in it, all that period of time. I think that's about all I want to say this evening. I would just remind you, and close by saying this to you, remember, time is fast, life is short, and there's no reruns. I didn't make that up, I got it off of the bulletin board down on South, not the bulletin board, but the sign they got down by the South Grove School, and I thought it says a lot, it really does. So I hope you'll cool down a little bit, everything's going to come out fine, may not like it, but that's why we've got an elected form of government here in the city of Beech Grove and across the United States of America. You won't be able to go away from this if it doesn't go your way, not knowing that your voice has not been heard. I can guarantee you it will be heard, and rightly so. And I hope when you get to be my age and don't have much time left on this earth, that you can say to yourself, "I was a yayer and not a nayer." Thank you for your time. Pardon me for my voice, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Anybody else who has not signed up yet, would like to speak?
Then it, Craig? We'll move to committee reports, ABC.
So Jim was talking about how they came out with the pamphlet of the resources. Do any of you still have the magnet with all the phone numbers and resources and contacts and everything?
I got one, but I don't know if it's the same one.
I do. What you get when you inherit your grandpa's house. All right, today we had one on the docket. We had Grace Foods LLC, which is doing business as Safeway. It was an automatic renewal, no violations, and that's it. Any questions? We, I'm still, I've been working with a few of the businesses on Main Street still on working on getting patios. So hopefully, moving forward, we'll have some outdoor seating with some of these bars and restaurants. It's pretty exciting. And then we have one business that is looking at getting a beer and wine permit, so that'll be exciting to see them branch out a bit, so. Once that finalizes, we'll let everybody know. Yes, sir?
Tell some activity there at the Old Meat Market. How's that coming along? Any updates?
That's a good question. I don't know. I know there's, it's, their license is still sitting, so hopefully they'll start moving soon with it, because it'll either need to be utilized or thrown into escrow.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
I have to say, but is there more than one business trying to do a patio?
Yes, I have two right now that are working on it, so. And it's a pretty easy process, so it's just trying to get everyone, a lot of the businesses have multiple owners, so it's trying to get all the owners together and lay out the floor plan and everything, so.
Oh, you know, if we, if I lean on something, it'll do that, so.
Ah.
I don't know if everybody didn't hear you or not. Well, I figured shuts my mic off, but I think it does that one, too.
I think I have a loud voice, hopefully it carried. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thank you for all that you guys do. You guys are doing excellent work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greenscape, compliance, and public safety you should have in your packet. Last report is financial. Dan?
The only thing I got this evening, because I knew we was going to get into some other information on numbers for the sewer and so forth, and that would be the corporation bank account balance as of Friday was three million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. The sewer balance was eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and thirty-seven cents, and these will be posted on the website also.
All right, any questions on any report?
Mayor, I was just going to make one note, because I don't worry about it, I don't have the report, but on compliance report, one of the things, there had been twenty-two letters sent out, but in the past month, there were no tickets written. And in most cases, I've, unless someone's compliance was jump up, that's kind of a good sign, because it shows that people are working with the compliance department on that. And most time I see that zero, which I always think is a good, a good thing. And most time I see that zero, which I always think is a good, a good thing.
I also want to make a comment on the public safety, and I'm not sure what all goes on here. But just to make sure everybody knows that, you know, I see what's going on. I believe in past two weeks, there's a house that I live four houses down from that had had countless police runs, and this is nothing against the police department, it's just a house that we always have issues with. But I believe it was probably the eleventh overdose at that house. And it's where my children ride their bikes, it's where they play. We had to watch a man in handcuffs get paraded down the street screaming, you know, all kinds of things. So I mean, it's, it's three houses down from me, and I've lived there for nine years. So, and this is nothing, anything, Rinks knows, I talk to him about this all the time. You guys do a great job. It's just something that this town is affected by this. And there are also certain people that allow it to happen in their properties. And I don't know how to deal with it, but, you know, that's something that we all need to take. You know, put our minds together, figure it out, so.
Any other questions for committee reports? If not, we'll go on to unfinished business. General Ordinance Number One, 2019, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. Prior to the meeting, I met with Counselor Duffer, and he printed out a new ordinance that has the changes, recommended changes in red lettering. So I'll defer to Counselor on how, on the direction.
Would you want to read the entire ordinance, or you want me to just to read the changes, Mayor?
Read the changes.
Okay. Under unlawful noises enumerated, the sentence between the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, comma, unless a special permit has been issued by the Board of Works, that was added. Under unlawful noises enumerated, horns and signaling devices, the, the words, or after continuing to do so after being asked to stop such noise, was added. On E of unlawful noises enumerated, the hours were changed from, they were changed to 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM weekdays, and the hours of 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on weekends. That was added. Then under commercial advertising prohibited, the words unless a special permit has been issued by the Board of Works was added. And under penalty, there was a penalty structure put in place. And I'll just read, most of this is new, I'll just read the whole thing. Persons or businesses found guilty of this chapter shall be assessed a fine in accordance to the following structure per calendar year. First offense is a warning only at the officer's discretion. The second offense is a $100 fine. A third offense is a $500 fine. Each additional offense will be set at $1,500. Each day an occurrence, excuse me, each day a violation occurs shall constitute a separate offense. That was the total of the additions to that ordinance.
So that would be your recommendation to amend the ordinance to include that?
It, it would be, yes. As you recall, last meeting, some citizens spoke out against it, and I challenged those citizens to come up with the changes that they wanted to see, and they did, they sent them to me. I put them in here, I passed them by our city attorney. He made a couple of recommendations from a legal standpoint, which then I changed, and this is the final copy. Well, like I said, I had to pass it by the city attorney. Well, but if you think about it, Pam, that's a fourth occurrence. You, you think somebody's really going to get a fourth occurrence? And if they do, don't they deserve it? Pardon me?
Man, I think we need to use common sense here, though. Do you really think that the cops are going to come over and write you a ticket because your mother can't hear the TV? I mean, no, I mean, let's use common sense here. What you're looking at, are, do we need to create a paint-by-numbers noise ordinance for the police? Is that what the citizens want? No, we don't need to create that. So the officer's discretion, this, I mean, I, I, this is really kind of troubling to me because we, we look at the ordinance that was seven pages long, and it says drums. Well, my daughter practices her xylophone in the backyard. Doesn't list xylophones in there. Should we put that in? No, is that's what you guys, that, that is what I've seen people want. There's common sense and discretion by police officers that used every day. You speed, if you go thirty-four miles an hour in a thirty, they may give you a ticket and they may not. It just, really.
Great question.
Sure.
On these tickets, don't this, don't this still have to go before the judge?
They're docketed with the court, yes, and then they're heard by the judge.
And let me tell you, folks, Judge Wells is a, not that it matters, he's a Republican judge. And I'll tell you what, he's one of the best things this city's ever had. And I don't think he's going to be unfair in this at all.
I think there's just this fear mongering about this noise ordinance that is apparently propagated, or propagandized itself on Facebook, which I'm not on, which I'm glad. I, I just don't get it. We have reduced this to where we're going to leave it to officer's discretion, which there are so many laws on the books that have officer discretion. How many, how many of you, raise your hands, have been pulled over speeding? Anybody? How many, how many got a warning when they were speeding? Would, would you say that's officer discretion?
Nathan, have you read this?
I asked him to come up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did you have a question, buddy? I'm sorry.
I, I asked, I was going to wait until everybody's done, but I did ask Nathan to come up, maybe give the police department a point of view, and just want to say something real quick. I, one of the things I had a chance, I worked for the department thirty years, and I don't remember anything but an officer coming over at ten o'clock at night when someone was pounding lumi sight and just say, hey, do it tomorrow, and that was the end of it, maybe the next day. But Nathan, would you?
Yeah, I can't speak, I know some of this would fall to the chief, like when it becomes a nuisance issue, I believe. It typically has to come through you to get handled, but just at, at a streetwise level, you know, I've heard some of these things about honking horns or a tuba playing, I, you know, that's, this never happened before, and I can't ever envision a time where we're gonna, you know,
Now, Nathan, if it said tuba playing in here, would you have to write a ticket?
What's that?
If it said tuba, playing in the backyard? I mean, that's what, it sounds like people want.
But it doesn't need to be, in my opinion, it doesn't need to be completely that specific. And the noise ordinance that I've always enforced for, actually, I've lived here now eleven years, well, in one hour, I have, I will have lived in Beach Grove for eleven years, so. I don't recall, you know, a noise is, if I pull up to the street, I know this is how we did on late shift. Chief, you were with me for a few years on late shift too, and you know, you come up, it's eleven o'clock at night, and I get out of my car, and I can hear it, and it's a couple of houses down, that's a violation. In any city, any state you're at in America, you get out of your car, you can hear noise from, from a house a couple of houses down, that's going to be a violation. You don't want to hear it through houses down. That's the spirit of any, any noise ordinance that I know, and I believe that's what's been written here. The most noise ordinances we typically go to are apartments. And usually if we come in and we can hear it, and we walk in, you know, like Diplomat, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Diplomat Apartments, on front of the high school, you walk, there's like a little breezeway enclosed, and there's six apartments. If I walk in there and I can hear the noise upstairs, that's a violation. Nobody in the middle floor wants to hear that, so we would tell them to turn it down, tell them to turn it off. We come out a second time, that's typically when we would take enforcement action. I mean, we've never, I, I know some guys have probably written for a car, it was too loud, like the music, but that's generally, I believe the state statute on that is like fifty feet. Fergie, I think you've probably done more traffic in your time than I have. Do you recall, is it about fifty feet if you can hear it's on a stereo?
Yes, I believe that's what the current city ordinance is.
So, and that's, you know, to, to tell you what that would be, is like if I'm getting gas at the Speedway and someone's going northbound on Emerson, and I can hear it, that's probably a violation. Someone's probably going to stop that and find out why their music's allowed, or tell them to turn it down. So it's very, you know, am I answering kind of what you wanted? I can, I can only kind of talk to what I do out on the street.
It's not what I wanted, I wanted your opinion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Whatever that might be.
So yeah, that's, you know, in my opinion, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know how specific you'd want it to get because I think it'd just be real problematic.
No, I, 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 kind of off course here, but I know that, I've got a few people out here that have been police officers. But, I mean, this council could vote that if you sit on your porch after eleven o'clock at night, it's against the law, and I know every one of you drive by and pretend like you never even saw them on their porch. Most of what you guys follow are, are, a lot of them are just based on common sense. No one, I don't know how many policemen is going to even pick up this ordinance and read it, but they will know that they have, if passed, they'll have some kind of structure to go by if they need to be. I think that's about what it is.
Sure, sure.
Part of the, you know, I speak for this, the mayor could probably speak on it more. I know why some of the changes were made. Example that Dave Harrison mentioned about us controlling the air with airplanes. Another one was, we had a hospital in the city that had some things to deal with it. So what someone tried to do was just clean up a few things in that ordinance. It probably wouldn't be practical today. The goal really wasn't to go after the citizenry. And while I'm talking, I can tell you I've never gotten more emails and phone calls on anything. The budget money we spend than we have on the noise. And all I can say is, is it scared me a little bit.
You weren't here during the smoking ordinance then, were you? That was real bad.
I only, I only speak for the time before and now.
The chickens.
Yeah, the chicken thing.
I mean, is it something, is it a tool?
Are you asking me?
To deal with, I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I had a drug dealer two doors down, they're gone now, so we're good. I can tell you everybody was making a drug deal, because I could hear this car stereo in my house with doors and windows open. And nobody ever pulled anybody over there.
Well, I would, I would say, I, I think, I hear that a lot, and, and people don't see what we do. And we don't necessarily. No, no, let me just explain, like, no, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, a lot of people see, well, I didn't see a traffic stop at the drug house right down the street from me. Well, that's because we're not going to stop them right in front of the drug house. We're going to stop them three blocks away as they're getting away, as they're driving away, so we can do an investigative stop, it's slightly different there. And we, and we do that.
And I know you guys.
We do it quite often.
I'm so sorry, I didn't catch that.
No, it's, it's.
Because you've really done a lot on my street, okay?
So I don't know, is that, does that give you?
No, you didn't. Yeah, I just thought maybe the police department itself ought to, would be good to come up and just.
I would more defer to the chief for more information, but yeah. So that, that would be mine from being out in the field, yes.
Does, did the chief, did you want to add anything? I'm not trying to take the show here, but, okay.
I do have a question. Now, I know that we've tabled everything about the noise ordinance being common sense. I get that. But what about the construction part of it? Like, I work with wood in my garage, and my husband replaced our floors last year. We, in the summertime, the sun doesn't go down till what, nine-thirty, ten o'clock? We shut off all of our closets at eight forty-five, nine o'clock, every night we were working on our floors. This new ordinance is telling us that we have to shut everything down by seven o'clock. This is so nice, he doesn't get home for it.
Road construction? No. Home, home construction.
What do we do in that aspect? Because a lot of us, you know, we have to put repairs on our homes, and we can do it ourselves.
That's a good question.
I mean, I, I wouldn't, I mean, personally, if I was your neighbor, I would never call the police on you. I'd probably come over with a couple of cold ones and see if you need any help. I mean.
Truthfully, he could probably answer it, but unless your neighbor was going after you, nobody would ever know. Right. What's that? Oh, you're talking about work permits. They give them a lot of leeway.
Like, I can tell you. Where a resident very upset about noise being made by a motor vehicle, a few houses down. And it bothers him greatly, but it is not a violation of the noise ordinance. And he has trouble recognizing that, but we can't, just because someone calls and says there's a violation, not make it.
This is just an example, because you're not in this town, but my parents are hard to hear. They're, they're way, way over noise with their TV. I mean, you could sit.
End the street. End the street.
There's some people in here who know their parents, you could sit way down the street and hear my parents' TV going. If a neighbor was to say something, you could not, you could probably say it isn't.
Since we've kind of got out of, Dave Chernobyl also had, after you were finished, since we've kind of got out of contents, or not contents, but kind of talking.
I think part of the problem is everybody's worried about what their neighbors are going to do. These guys use a lot of common sense. I've got a neighbor with two teenagers who are actually very well behaved. But for some reason, they can't remember to take their keys with them when they leave. And they set the alarm off. And they set it off three times in one day. And all three times, the police showed up and handed us the keys. And after the third time, the officer very politely looked at the young man and said, if you set it off again, there will be a fee. We're going to have to charge you for a false run, a false alarm. So please remember your keys. He wasn't there to run them up, he wasn't there to take anybody to jail, he wasn't there because some neighbor complained because they set their alarm off. So I think we have to be realistic about that. But my question, Mr. President, front and center, is how is the noise ordinance different than disturbing the peace or the animal ordinance without yapping dogs, barking dogs, howling dogs? What's the difference about this ordinance with what's already on the books with disturbing the peace and then animal ordinance?
I could ask the police department, I don't know if they could give you a good answer either. Because that's, that's a question that is so huge that there are some, there are some differences, but it all comes down, again, if somebody's kind of out of touch with it, the police department's going to look, do we, how do we have a means in which to make sure they won't do it again? The first thing I know is to go back is, is to try to tell people, hey, come on, you know, don't do this, because the goal is not to write. That's why I brought up the compliance. I look, month after month, there are a lot of talk about it, and they, they do have to do things fair. I'm not here to debate that. But usually there's, these things like noise, I, I, that's why when Dan asks the chief, I think you'll find that even in the past with it, that is something the police do not look to write on as these noise ordinance. They just go and try to get it quieted. And it doesn't matter what it is. Disturbing the peace could be a little difference depending, depending on the whole scenario, that's the problem. And that might get into an IC code with the police department. So I don't, I don't really, I don't really know. But I, I do want to say one thing while we're on this, is that I do appreciate Counselor Duffer, and Carla, and Pam, and Bob, and those that, that, hey, took it outside of the council for a minute. It might not be perfect, I don't know. On the, it's just like some mentioned about other communities, but I do, just, I want to make that statement that it was, that was a neat thing coming together to be able to get a, a view outside of the city council.
I have, on, on a spelling issue, on the penalty 102.99, each additional offense, OFF-E and CE should be SE. And then I did notice that on the penalty portion of this, that they did not put in any, and any fees assessed by the court, that was in the previous. And I asked the attorney about that, so do we need to make sure that we put and any fees assessed by the court back into that penalty section?
It's going to be done anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
If I file with the court, there's going to be court costs assessed, so it is what it is.
Understood, then.
I would also like to add, within that fee I would also like to add within that fee schedule that the item on the first offense in parentheses be added to every offense within the schedule, which is at the officer's discretion.
I think it would be anyway, wouldn't it? I mean, they just described going out three times.
Chris, we gotta have it exact.
So spelling offense, O F F E and C is the British spelling, so we'll switch it to the Webster offense, O F F E and S E.
And I would make a motion to approve those changes and then move to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Uh, there's a motion to amend the ordinance to include what Counselor Duffer, Duffer, Counselor, um, Maskary and Counselor Lamping stated. Need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number One, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading with the amendments. Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Before I do that, I better, we better waive the rules to read by title only.
Yeah.
Ask for motion to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
We'll begin on my left.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
I'll ask the clerk to read the, into the record by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number One, two thousand nineteen is an ordinance that amends chapter one oh two of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning noise control.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number One, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading with the amendments. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Voice vote, please.
Voice vote. We'll begin on my right. Kevin?
Nay.
Yea.
Yea. Yea.
The ordinance passes forward to, please register your vote. General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand nineteen is an ordinance that amends chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning intersection controls. Whereas I Street was recently paved and has opened up to more traffic. And whereas some residents have trouble backing out of their driveway to, to the increased traffic patterns. Whereas recently sidewalks have been added in the area of Sexton Ash, causing an influx of pedestrian foot traffic. And whereas local residents have asked their council representatives for help in reducing the rate of speed that cars use while driving I Street. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances concerning intersection controls. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following amendment be added into chapter seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances. Amend chapter seventy-seven traffic schedules. Schedule two, through streets and stop streets. A, number two, Churchman to Thompson Road to westbound three line. Add the following intersection, Ash and Sixth. Controls described, three-way stop sign, southbound Sixth, eastbound Ash, westbound Ash. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to change the intersection controls at Sexton and Ash Streets and no other streets. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to chapter seventy-seven the Code of Ordinances and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect thirty days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president Protem, attested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Final order of business for unfinished business is a RFP update, uh, on the sanitary sewer system with Todd Betron. But before Todd comes up, I will, I want to inform the board or the council that the RFP is finished. Uh, and we will have a special meeting on, at seven PM on the fifteenth of April to go through the RFP. So please mark that on your calendar. That's two weeks from tonight. It will be open to the public. So at this time, I will ask Todd to come up and, uh, give us any update that he may have.
What time's that meeting? Is it?
Seven PM.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council. And, uh, before I get underway, uh, obviously I've heard loud and clear the comments made in the chamber. Um, certainly respect the pride in this community. Uh, no, no doubt about it. It's palpable. Um, my, my remarks tonight will be brief. Um, just suffice to state that I've been in contact with, uh, Mayor Buckley, uh, your legal counsel, Mr. Wiley, and I've reached out to several members, if not all the members of, of the council, uh, for, uh, just to make myself available so we're not operating in a vacuum. Uh, this is, uh, the draft document. Uh, it is the RFP with the exhibits. Uh, associated with it, it's under legal review right now, making sure everything is, is, uh, proper, uh, related to Indiana code. The comment made earlier, uh, my, my brief exchange with, uh, Mr. Grenoble and another gentleman. I don't recall his name, both very pleasant, uh, after the last council meeting. Uh, as a point of clarity, the, uh, the, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission has by law two hundred and ten days, uh, to approve an order, uh, if you so choose to get that far, uh, to submit a, uh, joint petition. I've been in these environments, uh, before, and let me just say this is, uh, just as a human to human. There's no predisposed outcome here. Uh, I'm not advocating that. I've been, uh, engaged, invited into your community to oversee, uh, the step-by-step process. And at the end of the day, you have an ordinance that you will consider, perhaps, uh, not the mayor, but you, um, that will be drafted and for your consideration. Then the, uh, the regulatory oversight will have, uh, an opportunity to, uh, to look at it as well. I can't add anything more, uh, than what, uh, Mayor Wiley has already articulated. And I open your questions at this point.
So we'll have everything on the fifteenth?
We'll be poised and ready to go, uh, on the fifteenth. And, uh, I'll provide, uh, draft documents, uh, prior to, I'll either circulate them to the mayor or Mr. Wiley, uh, to disseminate to the council for your advanced consideration, um, before we, we, uh, release it, uh, to any interested parties. So, yeah, we'll be ready to go there.
So the, if we receive it on the fifteenth, when do you think the advertising would take place?
Uh, my recommendation is it commence on the sixteenth. And we would have responses, uh, due back, uh, to your legal counsel by May thirty-first.
Okay, so about a month and a half?
Yeah, about forty-five days, which is not unreasonable.
Yeah.
At that moment, at those times, my recommendation to Mayor Buckley is, is, and to the council, is to, um, organize a review committee, uh, of members of council and whomever else, um, to review the responses. Uh, and perhaps even take on the, the notion of the one point three million dollar, uh, as has been pointed out several times.
You keep me from pointing it out now. Thank you.
We, we will, uh, that's my recommendation as, as your advisor to, to get, get, um, get bright minds together and, and look at the alternatives. Uh, I, I don't know the capital investments that have, have, have been made into the system up to this point. Uh, that's something else to consider. What is that, what is that cost gonna be in rates? And then there is an, an order issued by the Regulatory Commission to the satellite community serviced by, what is CWA or Citizens, uh, that was issued in two thousand seventeen. So that's already in motion, which is part of this exhibit, uh, packet as well. It's publicly available, but, uh, it certainly impacts your utility. Other questions? Thank you, Council. I'll see you on the fifteenth.
Yep, thank you. Thanks.
That concludes unfinished business under new business.
Dennis?
Yes.
Uh, I do want to divulge the numbers that was asked at the last council meeting on the sewer. These I had a lady in the office do because I think there's no secret on how I feel about it. So I didn't want to be one-sided on it or anything else. Uh, she pulled these numbers. And what we have spent so far to date is fifty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. In saying that, uh, Todd's bill, only one of them has been paid for three thousand. So that leaves six thousand outstanding. A consultant that Todd wants to hire, uh, for ninety-five hundred, that has not been paid. Jeff Peters' bill is unknown because I have not received a bill from him yet to date. And an appraisal that they were asking for, the numbers on the, what it will cost to get the appraisal, uh, done is, uh, not in here either. So, uh, that's another fifteen thousand, five hundred, we know for sure, which brings it up to a little under seventy thousand dollars. And I'm sure there's some other incidental fees that we have not gotten yet. So I just wanted the council, let them know what we have spent so far to date on this.
Pardon me? I appreciate that, Dan. Uh, one of the things out of the numbers, you say, none of the Jeff Peters, there's no numbers in those numbers from Jeff Peters then?
No, not for this, uh, rate study. He did a rate study in twenty seventeen, but, uh, uh, not for this twenty nineteen rate study.
My guess, uh, Todd, would be, uh, that would be refundable upon the sale of the utility. Any other questions on, uh, the RFP? New business, resolution number four, two thousand nineteen is a resolution in support of hate crime legislation. I noticed John Barnes is in the only audience. John, you want to speak on it?
No, sir. I just, uh, I, I would simply say that this would be a good time to reiterate that issue, that, uh, communities like to be true, to tolerate hate crimes and that, uh, we need a strong statement on the issue. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you, uh, have any comment on it? Resolution number four, two thousand nineteen, uh, is up for approval. At this time, I will ask, uh, the clerk to read the resolution into the record.
Resolution number four, two thousand nineteen is a resolution showing support for hate crime legislation in the General Assembly in the state of Indiana. Whereas the City of Beech Grove City Council is proud of and celebrates the diversity of its citizens, it is a priority of our community to welcome and promote diversity among its citizens, visitors and businesses. And whereas the City of Beech Grove City Council desires to publicly declare its condemnation of discrimination in any form and to encourage people of varying and diverse backgrounds to call Beech Grove home. And whereas the City of Beech Grove City Council maintains that the future success of our city depends on promoting a secure, safe and diverse environment for all residents and visitors, free of fear associated with hatefully motivated crimes. And whereas the City of Beech Grove City Council agrees with Governor Holcomb, who has stated that no law can stop evil, but we should be clear that our state stands with the victims and their voices will not be silenced. And the General Assembly of the State of Indiana must move forward and pass a clear, inclusionary and comprehensive statewide hate crime legislation bill in the earliest legislative session. Now therefore be it affirmed that the city council desires to show support for clear, inclusive and comprehensive hate crime legislation, and the state must act to place such language into the law for the state of Indiana. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the city council desires that their intent be forwarded to the state of Indiana to be included in the record showing support of a clear, inclusionary and comprehensive hate crime legislation. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this resolution only applies to hate crime legislation and no other legislation. Now therefore be it affirmed that, that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president Protem, attested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I just want to say on behalf of, of a young man in my district, uh, Brian Witham, that he, uh, said that these kind of, um, resolutions, uh, could, or, or encourage, encourage economic growth and the benefit of the community as far as businesses, uh, feeling, uh, free and feeling, uh, welcomed to our community, which will, uh, build diversity in our city.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve resolution number four, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
I better do a poll vote on this one, beginning on my right. Kevin?
Aye.
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 The vote is six oh. Please register your vote. And the last order of business is a, um, request to hear a rezoning request from the owners of the property at two twenty-nine South Third. The petitioner is the Witness Foundation of Idaho doing business as Body of Christ Fellowship by Marvin Sangsland. They want to rezone one acre of their property from D five to SU one special unit, or Special Unit One classification to provide for religious uses. And the request tonight is to see if the council wants to hear that petition. I'll defer to Craig for any comment.
Yeah, so right tonight, we just vote whether we want to hear it at the next regularly scheduled meeting as to whether we want to approve their, their request. If we say we don't want to hear it, it goes downtown.
This saves them a trip, right?
Pardon?
This saves them a trip if we hear it, right, from going downtown?
Correct.
This has been used as a church. Uh, I mean...
This has been used as a church, I mean, ongoing as far as I know. It was the JC building at one time.
Why would we hear this as opposed to the Board of Zoning Appeal?
Well, I think they want us to make it, make, want to make our decisions locally, but they, if we don't, under unit, they will up in downtown.
Craig?
I mean, our own board, our own Board of Zoning.
Uh, it's not a variance, it's a, it's a repetition for zoning, so the, BZ agents have jurisdiction.
Okay.
And we've done this before with a couple other ones that is not a variance. Craig's correct on that.
When that building was built, I think it was JC's, and then they sold it to a religious group. Me personally, I would like for you to hear it because we've had trouble back there behind their building. They have a big storage trailer that's been back there for a long time, and we keep asking the zoning people to come out and, and look at this trailer because it can't, it's not a fit for that area. So I think it would be good to hear this for a number of reasons, but that being one of them.
They have to go along with any recommendation the board would make to pass it, so if you didn't want that trailer there, that would be the time to do it if you wanted landscaping around it, anything like that.
Is our, our decision final? Can they go then down to?
They, they can appeal, yes.
Okay, so they'd have an, an option above us, and they felt that we were not acting appropriately or something?
Yeah, and then if they don't like that, then go to the Superior Court.
Okay.
It just goes up the chain.
I just feel better they have that option.
I have no issue with hearing it.
So would it, would it be possible, Dennis, to get some pictures of what you're talking about as far as that trailer and such?
Sure. Can do.
So I'll make a motion that we hear it.
I'll second. You want to hear it? I mean?
Well, he was, I think, making a motion to that effect.
I made a motion that we will hear it.
President Vito.
Vito, second?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Craig, can you make notification to DMD?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That concludes new business. Council comments, beginning on my left. Bud?
I want to thank former state rep John Barnes for being here. Is he still here? Thanks for stopping in, saying something to us, appreciate it. Also, it's always great to hear from Mayor Wiley. Since he's not running for anything right now, I will say you can't find a more kinder, honest, and loving person for this community, and we appreciate, always appreciate your comments. You might have been wrong a couple times up here, Mayor, but other than that, that was about it. Do want to thank, and I hate to say all these again, but a lot of things sink into me even after we get to this point, but just like Dave Grenoble and Richard Busby and Carla Richardson, Bob Ferguson, Jim Coffin coming up here, Pam Staller, Luanne Clark, just to, I might have missed somebody that have come forward. And I can't say it again that part of my reason with the ordinance was basically is some of the work that was supposed to be finalized and turned in, and that was why, what made my decision, even though there might have been a few exceptions to it. I would like to see, Mr. Busby brought up a good thing and something to really, I think, improve the city for safety, and I certainly have done nothing for you in this regard, zero. But I think we could do more, is maybe look into the sidewalk situation, because I've heard it plenty of times. It's not a lack of not knowing that, but I've heard more people talk about, about that. I don't know how the city moves forward on that, but I'll, I'll do, I'll do what I can. And then I, once again, just want to say, you know, on the sewer, I guess I could say whether I'm for or against depends upon the information we get. I certainly won't want to be premature when something could be better for the city that we turn our back on it. Another thing I hate to say, there was number mentions, I, those numbers were spent while I was council, and I've approved them. So if everything goes bad, then I'm responsible for spending a lot of money, along with some other people, I guess, even to get to this point. I do want to say one other thing about it that Mayor Wiley did say, and some people brought up something that's, and I'm trying not to make this speech day, but it was our independence in the city. I hope all of us want to be strong and independent. One thing if, and I say if, the sewer was sold, someone did bring up a good point, but Mayor, Mayor Wiley made me think of something. You know, if it makes you less independent than Indianapolis is less. They, they have also given their sewer work over, I think in their case it would be to citizens. I do know from some of their council, they're not exactly that excited by some of the work that's been done, at the progression that's being done. And then for us to be, no matter what happens, is be less dependent upon that utility in our general fund, because it's a burden upon our city, and it's a burden upon the people who work for our city, because if we can't recruit some losses or something, that could be a bad, bad sign. So I just hope that whatever happens, we can become less dependent upon the utility as far as the money we get into our general fund. And thanks everybody for coming out, that's all I have.
Ditto. I'll keep it short because he said most of what I wanted to say, and I do want to thank Chris and the people that worked with Chris on that. But as I always do, I'm gonna give my last account of the Beach Grove basketball team. They went to the Sectionals, they won the Sectionals, they went to the Regionals, played a tough Greencastle team and beat them, played a tougher Attics team and coulda, shoulda beat them, but they didn't. And it was a, it was a well-played game. These kids deserve a lot of their accolades. I did see them, and I don't know if this is right, but I did, the Attics ended up getting beat by some smaller school, and they went on to win the state, I think it was Silver Creek or something like that. But, long story short, I seen where Beach Grove, I believe in the final standings, finished 10th in the state ranked, which I thought was one heck of an accomplishment for kids that had a rough season after they lose their coach. And I, I would love to see, we, we have these kids in here all the time, you know, giving them whatever we give them, you know, special recognition, and I would love to see that high school. The JV team in two years lost one game, the very last game of the season this year, and it was a heartbreaker, but they lost to Whiteland. And in two years, that's a heck of a record. I'd like to see the varsity and the JV in here in May if we could get them in, to just recognize what they did. Good group of kids, that's all I got.
Just thanks for everybody coming out, looking forward to, since this weather's breaking, to see everybody out and about, walking, you know, around Beach Grove, having a good time, so thanks.
I want to thank the chamber for the, our wellness fair that we had. It was good attendance to that. I think the citizens enjoyed it, booths were great, so there was a good effort and that worked out well. And then remember Going Green in the Grove, so Going Green in the Grove, April 27th, another community effort that we're putting forth, so I'll be, enjoy it and have, have a good time. Thanks for everybody for being here.
Horns behind you too, they're, horns agreeing with you, so.
Chief, you gotta write them a ticket.
Yeah, so thank you.
I'd like to thank Bobby and Carla and Pam for getting together and modifying the ordinance and sending it to me. I just heard too many people speaking out against it, so it's a difficult thing to sit up here. You, you're torn between what you think is best yourself and the fact that you're a representative. You're supposed to represent what the people want, so I listened to you tonight, I, I liked the work we did on the ordinance, I thought it was good, but I listened to the people and I voted against it, so that was my reasoning. So thanks for all of you coming out. Thank you, Mayor Wiley, as usual. I always enjoy your talks. They're very, very informative and entertaining and love hearing them. That's it.
Okay, the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Could we, could we do it all over again?
The meeting is adjourned at what time? Dan, I don't know.
8:36.
8:36. We will convene on April 15th at 7:00 PM.